You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for regular meeting, January 29th.
Second? Second?
Motion made, second in all, in favor say aye.
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 Make the motion to approve non-public meeting one and two on January 29th.
Second?
Motion made, second in all, in favor say aye.
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 Motion to approve the extended agenda.
Second?
Motion made, second, anything to add, Michael?
Nope, just wants us to sit here.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public input. Seeing none, new business. Town administrator recruitment and interim services.
So the board met, non-public interview, two firms, so attach those proposals here, so this will be a big selection and make a decision.
Have you come to a decision?
Yep.
And you?
No.
You gonna abstain?
No, I'm not.
So you're referring to the revised or the repeated versions, okay.
So what about Alex they're talking about?
Yeah, and both of them.
Yeah. Which one you guys want?
I don't know, it's slide, but.
I have two. We're going with Alex.
Rethink, would you like the motion?
Make a motion, I'll make that motion too. So Alex, isn't that it? Select rethink.
Okay. And I'll second that, when would they start, middle of the month?
Later this week.
Later this week, okay.
Try to meet your aggressive timeline.
They'll meet it.
Try.
They're lined up, the candidates are lined up. You've created such a cushy job, they're all just.
They've all heard.
That's right. They want to be a part of this.
Great board, great attorney, waiting in the wings.
You got great AV or online.
At least the V part.
All right, motion made and seconded to enter in or authorize the chairman to sign the contract with rethink for town administrator recruitment and interim administrator services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Recurring weekly rental of Whitcomb Hall.
So we have a memo in here from Katrina, I recall several years ago now, we had someone who wanted to do something similar to this, I think it was baking, and the board was not receptive. I honestly don't, again, don't recall all the details, so I said, well, before we do a kind of long-term commitment, why don't you run and buy the war, and she said, this renter is pretty flexible, willing to work around, you know, we got Tuesday nights are generally pretty open, but I think the Legion's one Tuesday at Montlu, so if they want to do Tuesdays, but then one week, you know, Tuesday's booked, and they'll do Thursday, they're fine with that, so it seems like it would be a good anchor tenant to help cover some of the, cover a lot of utilities, but like I said, I recall the board being concerned with doing something with that.
Do we know what it is?
I think it's a great food truck.
I didn't get a chance to look at the packet.
The one from Ring? What page it said on my?
Thirty-five, so says, received inquiry for great food truck owner interested in Whitcomb Hall, once a week, so it should be in the kitchen, prepare food for the truck, should be using the kitchen for three hours, which time to do some baking, bake, clean, clean space, take your product where it's home, usually have Tuesdays open, should always change days.
So I take it they got a food license for the commercial kitchen, that they're gonna come in and inspect it and make sure it's up to, because when you do that, he's gonna have to have some kind of food license to have that, it's gonna be considered almost like catering. This one?
For the food truck.
Well, is he cooking the food here?
Yeah.
And he's taking the food from here and going into food truck, our kitchen's gonna have to pass those, just like anything else, because he's cooked preparing the food here, and it has to have all the amenities for passing the food to, I'm pretty sure of that. I mean, if I had to, if I wanted to do catering offsite and I had to go to a building, they're gonna come and check out where I'm gonna prep this food, so either he or somebody was gonna have to hold some kind of license, I think. I would imagine he has catering licenses, he's running a food truck, right?
I don't, I would assume also, but I don't.
Well.
More work needed. But are we amenable to it if everything works out?
It looks all right, other than, I don't, is there a triple bay sink in there? That's the most important thing, is there a triple bay sink, and you got the oven, you got the ancil system? Yeah, there's a grease trap, it probably would pass life, but I think we're gonna leave that to him to make sure that's off, that's not us, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. So Michael, what would be the concern with the Legion using it on a Tuesday? The kitchen's isolated, except for the restroom.
I wouldn't say it was a concern, I was just saying, if they weren't able to be in there, I might, they'd be going to use it.
Tuesday, could you come up here, Legion?
Are we gonna be, should we meet with this guy maybe and ask him a few questions? Or you feel good with it?
No.
No, not good.
Do you?
I think Sloane and Tempesto would make a great liaison.
There you go.
Yeah, I think I have the questions for them that are gonna be important to make sure that it's held to where we need it to be held, definitely. If you want to leave that to me, I'll take that.
Well, you can coordinate it with Katrina.
I'll coordinate it with Katrina. I can do that, Mike.
So with regard to the word liaison, one of the things I'd like to bring up is, we're fast approaching, Michael, leaving, and as we discussed in our last, when we were talking with the consultants, that we would act as liaisons between the department and the board as we're developing the town administrator position on a temporary basis and then ongoing. So what I'd like to propose is that we have, we have six departments, essentially, we have the town hall, we have the rec department, police, fire, police, fire, DPW, and recycling, and I'd like to propose that, given the fact that you're in transition, in other words, transitioning out, and somebody new is transitioning in, that you consider taking the rec department and the recycling department for the time being, and then that would transfer to the new selectmen, and then I propose that Jim, because of his constant discussions with police and DPW, and the two Joes, he won't get their names mixed up, that he take DPW and police, and that I would cover town hall and fire on the interim. What do you, you guys have any thoughts on that?
I think, I think it's a great idea, because I was, I said to you that maybe we need to fill into the town hall, and this is a good way to do that, and I would have no problem on my end, I have a good relationship with Joe and Joe, so I could handle those.
All right, what do you think, Sly?
Only problem might be town hall and fire getting short end of the stick on this.
They would definitely get the short end of the stick, there's no question.
All right, let's do it.
All right.
I think it makes sense versus all of you trying to pick up all of it, and then you have more chance of things potentially.
And we'll just leave it to come back to the table in so much time or whatever, whatever we feel is fit, or we can leave it there as.
We should be able to report every week.
Yep.
I think. It may not be anything more than a phone call.
Is to recall that, you know, you don't want to be making decisions, it's for, it would be a conduit back to the board.
Right.
Any deliberative session preparation?
Bruce had mentioned that it might be easier, so it's a little less to keep track of, that we have consistent people making the motion and seconding, so I definitely want to assign that out, and then also, we're just going to introduce each article, I gave you guys this little, which I'm sure you already probably didn't need, but a little brief note, just introductions, or maybe have like, kind of give you the, yeah, so the line at the front is for you to figure out who wants which one, and just to, just to do the brief introduction, this is the budget, the budget is this.
I'll move the motion, Sly will second, and Jim will explain.
No.
Jim will move the motion, you'll second, I'll explain.
Let me second, let me second. I want to second.
Because you always make the motion.
I know, but let Billy make the motion, he's good at that is.
Oh, you wanna do that?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, you can do that, and then I'll second it, and then after I second it, and then we go to the discussion about it for a little while, and then, right, just like we always do.
Well, no, it's different.
Oh, it is different?
Yeah, so what Sly's gonna decide is if, if we, if we want to speak to any of the articles, or we're just gonna.
Do you read this, or?
Speak to the article, because he's gonna do the presentation anyway, and that doesn't mean you can't say anything on the article, if it's not assigned to you, it's not like we did with the school board, with a couple of.
So the opportunity for some of the speakers after Mike goes.
Well, however, Sly wants to set up.
Whatever Sly does.
But during the discussion, you'd have the opportunity, this is just the formal part of it.
Okay.
How do you want to handle the zoning and planning articles and stuff?
Normally, unless someone has a question, we don't.
But you're just gonna walk us through those and say?
I wasn't.
We're not doing it, we're not doing any of this, and then, okay. So you're gonna move the.
I'm gonna move the motion.
Move the motion, everything.
Then I'm gonna say second.
Second, and then we'll take turns reading this.
No. Bruce will take care of that, it's just. Oh, the explanation, the summary, I got you.
I don't want to read that.
I'll do it then.
You'll do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll say Jimmy says.
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm gonna be thinking in case I want to speak, I don't want to be, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Sly.
Right there. Any old business?
I do, I read it all today, I went up and down it.
Any non-public sessions?
All done. He gave me the bad news.
Did he convince you?
Yes, no, well, yeah, of course he did, he's, he knows what he's talking about, I'm just guessing, but I'm, I'm just talking, it ought to be practical, but, but I do think that we should have Cordell as close to Bruce as possible.
He's as far away as possible.
I know, but I don't think that's what we want. Are you able to hear all right, Cordell, because it's.
What?
Good one.
Perfect. Kinda opened that door for you, didn't I?
You did, I can, but I'll sit wherever you want me to.
This was a compromise, he wanted to be in the back row.
No, I'm, I'm fine, if you want me closer to the moderator.
So this is a meeting until. After deliberate session.
We probably need to go check in, right? Did you register?
Of course.
Tracy, did you register?
I was surprised that was more than.
Yeah.
Forget you gotta register.
Tracy did so, that'd be, and I gotta, I gotta go, yes. He's gonna need a little more room. Probably should. You all right, Chase?
What do you know, a lawyer must.
You guys get hearings up there to this one?
Yeah. Ten, ten hearings. Mostly about welfare. Well, not, I take that back, nonprofits and things like that, some of the proposed bills are exactly the same.
You'll stay near there a lot in the summer, probably.
Summer?
Well, spring to summer.
You won't be up there in the summer, because you'll be alone. You got a noosey? You got a noosey?
Hey buddy, how you doing, all right?
Yeah, I'm good, man. You?
I'm having a big huge crowd tonight.
You like that?
I thought we would, which times I'd say it's.
Seven.
That's why I'm paying attention, I thought it was seven.
Mom, I guess at the school, maybe.
I went, I helped, I was assistant operator, we're bill, covered the votes, I learned a lot. It was crazy, rich, and the whole town showed up. It was crazy, they kinda budgeted.
I don't know if that's.
You're in the right spot. Yep, you can either just go by Michael's office during the week and fill out the agenda items, or if you have public input, you can bring it up, and we'll do our research with police, DPW, and he's probably calling you, and the next scheduled meeting, so we can talk.
Thank you.
Yep, but the best way is just.
We can stand, it's confusing for people, too. Now it's gonna be a little, they're gonna, there's no means, nobody's gonna, you know?
Oh my God.
Is that the lawyers in here?
Yeah.
Jimmy, Jimmy made Joe an accident.
Did you go today to Conker, today?
Yep, long day.
Long day, you just getting back to the wilders?
Yeah, around five.
Jesus Christ, what do you do, like eighty-nine, and where did you start?
Korean food.
Where?
Right around the corner from the, yeah, shoes getting back, right around the corner from the State House, next door.
Did you go in to eat?
No, I'd gone in to eat before, but this time I just grabbed a couple of tandoors to give back, and, like, it's pretty interesting.
We didn't even have one in Keene, like, your place?
No, not that I know of.
It's not.
Keene International Market sells some stuff.
Michael, did you see Joe's dinner tonight? Is that beautiful looking or what?
Oh, he's good.
Joe called me and he said he wanted a dinner, and he wanted to go to the bathroom and pick it up.
He was all alone.
He got, I got this new item, the fly that I bought, I got CAB filet tips, so you take a filet mignon, and you take the whole tenderloin, and they cut the centers out, those are your nice eight ounce, and when they get to that point far, they pack them up into three ounce pieces, and they put them in each cryo bag, and everybody tastes it, and they have filet tips, they're soft, cooked nice, you know?
Dun dun dun. Good for you.
They're awesome, huh?
Trump shit.
Kinda like what you did, yeah, he'll come back, don't worry.
Do you help Bruce, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
So you step up into play? There's some just a step up.
All right, so when I get done doing everybody, then you'll take over, because it's keep John, pledge. Sly should have all side conversations, just take the outside. I don't know if Pam is being here for some like this. I don't want any, Cap's gonna be here, it's gonna be.
So you're, you're finishing.
Definitely. Learn fast, it's like that, Michael's, he's trying to, you know, you know, relationship, and I'm gonna miss it.
Yeah.
He's gonna be top of the place.
Yeah, yeah, he is.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss it, too. He's gotta be a big sports fellow, so, a little nerve after the team, because I joined, to join a team, and it was already a, they're now a whole team, and I couldn't see you man, I'm not ready for it.
So, Sly's not moving?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, he's been, he's been around.
Well, yeah, that's, well, when I. Twenty-five, thirty years ago, I ran for the planning board of my town, and I thought, you know, it's a good, you know, learn gradually, within six months, chairman had retired, and they decided that I was gonna be chair.
I'd be serious, this is what happened, and I'm like, oh, this is not what I said, I'm like, oh, my God, I'm like, I'm all ruled in my head, I just wanted to follow the lead, you know, and just put my little input and learn and develop, and you go with that.
Tell Bill he, he has to at least serve out his terms.
Course he is, yeah, and he's really supportive, he's, you know, he's definitely going, he's making sure that I'm faster. That's a good deal.
Did you go to the municipal associations, they have a workshop, local officials workshop, they do that, they're usually in May, April or May? Yeah, they're right after elections. Free?
How was your tip? How was your sermon?
Thank you.
He'll be around to help.
Thanks, too. Thank you.
And I saw her there, go, she posted. Oh, no, no, she was talking about her grains. Well, she thought, that's the sewer, and somebody else, that's a storm. Old and windy today. And we planned about Combe Hill, is that rutted or just slick? Yeah, this is on everything, but what he did on college. Somebody's gotta worry. Enough room?
That's plenty, thank you.
Thank you. Turn the sensor down. Same.
Glad you got something on your hip there. You and Joe will make a good team.
Why didn't you tell me?
What time is it? It's only, it's only five? It's five, six thirty?
You were.
You could've, you could've brought him in downstairs and we could've sold off. Right, we'd have paid the freaking bond off. Jeez. We could've had a hell of a down payment. Just a gin party.
She said the association was like, on the... She thought that was his pride.
They gotta have an association. I don't think an association for a condo can go. For that, if the association was responsible for the street, that should be the town's responsibility. They may be, but how did they get there?
What condo?
Perilane. I mean, they used to be Perilane Street. That's right. Because that's what always... It always held us up from...
It used to be an association.
No, no. Don't do that. Maybe if Mike looked back when we changed over to L E Ds. Because there wasn't that long, it was only ten hours, I think. Are they all living?
No, they're all...
Yeah, I don't think we have, we have them back. Do they look like West One? Main Street streetlights or any, any streetlights? You got a bucket truck? You can put those streetlights up and everything, you can go.
Whoever sorts the light that happens. But that area doesn't have the crosscars like this.
Swansea Light and Power. There you go. Another bond, another tip. But seriously, we should figure out how that happened because they, they always held us up. They had to submit, what is that, whatever form? Yeah, the M S forms, so I could forget our taxes.
I'll find the last one, you can tell, it's definitely on the register. I'll ask for it, tell one of the other, I might vote above. Teresa says, or she knows what happens.
Did you, did you get to meet Cordell?
I haven't yet.
Yeah, so get, get his card because we need to find out when that transitioned and why. I don't remember. Maybe we did, maybe we voted to take it over, but I, I gotta believe I would've raised the question of, of an association going away. I mean, they got capital reserve funds, it, it, the association is responsible for aspects of those buildings.
And today I had no chance to look at the tax map to see what it showed. Yeah, definitely needs to work to go forward. Would you like to decide, because I don't think Seven Street lights out.
It's a condo association, it's not all responsibility, Jim.
Then why now you gotta find out all the ban, ban?
I could understand that it is, it's a town road, that I could understand. Because we probably took that over. We wouldn't have... And the brushwork, that's them, that's not us. Seriously, it's, it's an association. Whether, whether they've, whether they've disbanded it or not. Be interesting to see who the, the attorney is.
Brush obviously helps us because in this type of year with the side view, you know, three, six, five, I don't know, seven, eight, nine, ten. You don't see it when you drive in, but you see the brush. Oh, there's snows on them and they're like this and you're barely getting under it. And you wonder why you can't get the road, cut the brush today up, California. Build from the street, just these days. I don't mind, so I just pull it from condos, like the block, and they have it. Taking pictures on YouTube, a little bit more to do there, California.
No rest for the weary. So did you hear that Jim's gonna be your liaison with the select board? Starting now. You and, and Joe. That way he won't mix up your name. I don't know how long it'll run, but it'll probably be through the summer by the time the new town administrator gets up to, up to speed. Yeah, we, we just engaged a consulting group called Rethink. And, and they, the, the individual, I can't think...
Do you remember Alex's last name?
Anyway, his first name is Alex. He's been a town manager, town administrator. And he's gonna be, we, we gotta flesh that out two or three days a week at town hall to process paperwork and put agendas together and things like that. I'm sure we're gonna have to pick up some of the slack as well. And so we just divvied up the six departments. Excuse me, and then Sly will obviously do it until his term is up and order comes in, we'll pick up Sly's. And we'll just, we'll just go with it, see what happens. I talked to, um, John Frederick. Do you know him? He's the town manager for Jeffrey. He said we're gonna get flooded. I said, you gotta be nuts. It's flooded, Joe, we've been through D P W twice, we've been through police, we've been through fire. We, we, we don't get a lot of applicants, he said. We'll get a lot. So we're, we're like a stepping stone. But we're not where we were, we're up here now. So people that are on their way up will, will pick us up, hopefully. So Bob Smith gave me the name of somebody in Vermont, I gotta give him a call. Quite a few people mentioned the lady, including John Frederick and Elizabeth Ryan, the lady in ringe. Yeah, so there's her and, uh, Michael's gonna find it his from their, their group. Well, yeah, so, so I, I don't know who else, but, but anyway, that's three. And, and that's more than we've got for some positions. Yeah. Yeah, for our budget too.
Yeah, that would, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, what, what do you think the timing is on that? So by the end of March, we're done. Have your cameras gone up?
They are waiting for the signs and they're, I was supposed to tell you last week, they're operational, but I'm waiting for the warning signs to go off. So they should be working by then, but they didn't make it. They told the guys. So I'm gonna put them up on the signs.
No blame is there?
Which I had to go and test. I had a bad module, I couldn't get it working. I had to get a new module, it all worked and it, like, it was... And then, uh, have you seen the actual door lock?
I saw the keypad.
Yeah, yeah, so I had to look at D P W to put a lock that coincides with that program. So like, Megan, work with resources, person might be up, but all of them. So I think, but the, the door guy told me that the door is, the frame's starting to rust every day. So for a new door and a lock, it's like thirty-seven hundred dollars to put it work on that system. I don't wanna pull the trigger until Megan gets some work in, she's not sick. Or she gets work and it says, okay, this is gonna work. Do the same thing, they'll talk right into that door.
Oh, good. That'll be good.
Looks like a pretty good...
And you have a camera on the inside, so we know if somebody gave their code out?
I have a camera right on the outside. And a camera on the outside of the doors, one shining at the salt bin where cars go out back, and then one at the back door.
Stuff you have to do, you never had to do.
No, no. Definitely, like I said, for years, we had to, we had to fix up, we had to fix up expenses. Like, yeah, we had, we had two more phone lines, wireline. But for years, we had all that, and it's like, we're on, we're on.
Let me introduce you to Cordell.
Right there.
Take your time, take your time. Jim's got a hold of him, he'll never get away.
Yeah, real good.
Joe, this is Cordell Jeffrey.
We've talked quite a few times.
Oh, Joe was...
Yeah. Good to meet you as well, thanks for the work on that sewer. Check it out, we're interested. Very welcome. I haven't talked to Joe since I heard you. Still, still need to be quiet about that. Yeah, I like your idea. I liked your approach. Billy, if we wanna go up and talk a little on a subject, we can get up, we go right over there. We can do it right here. Is that how you're gonna do it, if you talk? Because you're gonna talk about a couple of subjects, aren't you?
Depends on the mood of, of the crowd.
So it's funny, we, we... You mean with the engineers and Joe was there?
But, yeah. What is this one? Does it red mean it's on?
Yeah. Yeah, because they're not on, see? So anytime we have a different, what are your plans on, like, Joe?
Don't believe a word of that.
I used to do excavation work before, but then I had my law work in four years, and here I am back.
I used to do excavation work before, but then I had my last work in four years, and now I am back.
Good to see you.
Good for you, Frankie.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, I don't want to go through that. Before we vote. That was the whole thing. People didn't understand. But it wasn't just my business. I had to coordinate with all the school district, the model, you know, for the town. I didn't know. I'll go around for me.
Good evening, folks. Um, at this time. Hi. Well, sit up here. Well, they told me they were gonna get me a microphone this year, but they didn't tell me it wasn't gonna work. Is the technician for the sound system here? Oh, he is here, so. Excuse me, I don't know how to run this. Well, you'll have to speak up, I guess. So, hi. So, welcome to the 2025 deliberative session. Thank you for taking the time to attend. I'm the town moderator, Bruce Tatro. We're broadcasting the meeting live and is being recorded, although to participate, vote, or make motions, people must be physically present. Has everybody registered that came in, signed in with the checklist? All right, good. Um, let's see. The evening's meeting is the first session of this year's annual town meeting. The purpose of this session is to determine the form and warrant articles, form of warrant articles that will be presented to voters at the polls on March 11th in the Menaduck Regional School District Gymnasium. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to recognize some of the town officials and employees helping out this evening. First off is the supervisors of the checklist. Linda Faulkner and Lee Dunham. Linda's not here, right? Those present at tonight's session should have checked in before coming upstairs. If you have not checked in, I already said this three times. To make sure you check in. If we have any ballot, request for a ballot vote on any of the items. Um, the Lee and Linda will be taking care of the ballots as far as getting them out and collecting them. We have a ballot box. The ballot box is up back. So, just like regular voting. If you request a yes or no paper ballot, you must be, it must be submitted prior to an article to vote in writing with the signatures of five voters who are present. If a paper ballot vote is called for, we'll go over the rules at that time. I'd like to invite Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Bill Hotwoker, to the podium. Bill will recognize Sly retirement after nine years as a selectman in transitioning to his new rule role as a state representative.
You already did it.
Talk into the mic. Talk into that. Well, many of you know Sly as our representative at the Christmas, Swansea Christmas, as he reads the Christmas carol to all of your kids and grandkids. But I know him as a selectman who came in in 2016, and I've sat proudly by him all those years. He's chaired the selectmen three times. He's been a great leader, and I think we owe him a tremendous debt of gratitude. He's gone on, and now he's taken the big pay raise up to a hundred dollars a year plus mileage to work on our behalf at the State House. So I hope you'll join me in thanking Sly for all he did for us.
Do my brief few announcements. Okay, I have a few brief announcements. I'm gonna ask that any side conversations that take place because of the problems we're having with hearing take place outside of the main hall due to the acoustics. So that might also mean going downstairs. Guess I'm gonna go right into Michael. I don't have a very good list here. Yep, but first I'm gonna do Michael. I want to recognize Michael as, most of you probably heard, he's leaving us. He's going to Wyndham as bigger, better prospects. Michael came here over ten years ago, and when he came in, we were in the process of inventorying all our critical infrastructure in town and looking at the bills that we're gonna have to pay for everything from dams to roads, bridges, culverts that the state now said are bridges, buildings, Whitcomb Hall, Main Street, Hale Hill Road. That was a good one, that was a culvert that they said that's a bridge now, so. We rebuilt Hale Hill Road, which was never really built to begin with. That worked out so well, Michael talked us into doing Eaton Road. And he's done a lot for this town in ten years. And if you just look back at what it was and where we're at now, I think we all owe him a debt of gratitude, and we are gonna miss him. So thank you, Michael.
I'd like to just say something to Michael. I'm the new guy, and y'all know that. But I'll tell you, Michael made my job so much easier coming into this, and more than anybody, I'm gonna miss him the most, because I feel that way, because he really guided me and taught me a lot, what's going on near the side of this whole thing that I've always sat over there, and I've seen a lot over here, but Michael, I'm gonna thank you, and I'm gonna miss you quite a bit. Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to recognize our town officials again. I'm Sly Karasinski, Chair. Bill Hotwoker and Jimmy Tempesta, Selectmen. Town Administrator Michael Branley, we just met. And Town Council Cordell Johnson. Town Clerk Heather Estrella. Right over there. Deputy Town Clerk Ashley Patnod. Police Chief Joe Gonzalez. Fire Chief Eric Matson. Public Works Director Joe DeRusso. Solid Waste Manager Josh Whipple. See here, working? Finance Director Teresa Launer. Tax Collector and Emergency Management Director Kevin Westcott. Town Planner Adam Paquette. Assistant Town Planner Stefan Mahu. Mahu? Recreation Director Ashley Crosby, don't get up. And I think they all deserve a round of applause.
Thank you, Sly. I would now ask everybody to rise, and the Police Chief Joe is gonna lead us in pledgeable regents.
I, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think they glued them together. The first session meeting of rules. Handouts, which include the warrant articles to be considered at this evening's meeting, are available in the back of the hall. Going to establish a few guidelines similar to those we have used at the past meetings for this evening's session as follows. Number one, everyone should treat each other with respect, please. Before asking a question or making a statement, please make your way to the microphone in the center and identify yourself for the record. If you would like to speak next, please make your way to line up. You do not need to wait until the person before you finishes. Also, in other words, you can just stack up and take your turn. Non-voters, which I don't believe we have any of tonight, cannot speak at the meeting without permission of the meeting. So if we have someone that chooses to, wants to address, I will ask you folks if it's all right for them to talk, and you can go. Yes or no. But I don't believe we have anybody tonight that's gonna be here. As at past meetings, the moderator will allow town staff to provide information or address questions which may arise during the course of the meeting. Running debates will not be allowed. Remarks and questions should go through the moderator. If during the meeting you disagree with the ruling of the moderator, you may request that the House be polled. This is the voters' meeting, and the voters may overrule the moderator. With respect to motions for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider will be considered in order if made within ten minutes of declaring the result of the original vote. We will be protecting the wording of each article, projecting the wording of each article, and will forego reading them. When we get to an article, it will be projected on the screen, and it'll ask for a motion and a second. I will then open the floor for discussion of amendments. Any amendments to an article will need to be submitted to the moderator in writing, and amendments will be voted on one at a time. The amended article will be put on the projector, and then will be debated and voted on. Additional discussion and amendments will then be allowed. When the voters are done with amendments and discussion, I will then call for the vote. Finally, I will declare the result of the vote, and we will move forward to the next item of business. State law requires all articles on the warrant to be voted by official ballot, so motions to pass over or postpone indefinitely are beyond the authority of the first session and will be ruled out of order. Article one is the election of officers, and Article two and three are zoning amendments, which do not need to be discussed tonight. Our first item of business is Article four. Look at that. Which is now displayed on the screen.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article four for debate.
Motion to move for debate on Article four, drive a second.
Second.
Second for you.
Okay.
Article four is now open for debate.
I can speak to it, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
This article represents a $3.5 million project for a fire station to replace Station Number Two in the basement of Town Hall using a $2.5 million bond. This design was put together by a citizen committee who worked to develop the most cost-effective solution that met the project's core goals: getting the fire station out of the basement of Town Hall, providing a safe and clean facility for the fire department, and being responsive to the taxpayers. The cost for this article is the same as saving $300,000 per year for a new fire station, which, without inflation, will take ten more years.
Any further discussion on Article four, the fire station? Anyone else wish to speak? Visit the microphone, please. Even though they don't work. We pretend.
It's been voted down six times, and I wonder how long does it take? Or how do you recognize the fact that no is the answer? We voted it down, here it is again. If it gets voted down this year, it'll be seven times. If it gets voted down this year, it'll be seven times and I think that's a bit much. You ought to look outside the box for some other way of having the fire department out of Town Hall. Now, 30 years ago when I was town clerk, I complained about the diesel smell. It was overwhelming anytime there was a fire. Nothing was done. They said, oh no, they came in when the fire trucks weren't running. No carbon monoxide. Had they had been there during the time I complained, when there was a fire call, they would have smelled it. They couldn't have helped it. It was not only the diesel, but when you leave there every afternoon with a headache and sick to your stomach, there's something wrong. 30 years ago, you wouldn't have been in the problem that you have today of finding a location. I'm asking that you think this over again and vote this down. The location is terrible. You're putting a Swansea Centre Fire Department in North Swansea. That's always been part of North Swansea since I've been living here and that's a good long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
In answer to your question, Carol, we haven't gotten 60%, which is required for the bond, but we've gotten over 50% every time. So the majority of the people want it, it's just trying to figure out a way to get it.
I'm Carolyn Noah. I live on Bellevue Road and I'm sorry to disagree with my good friend Carol, but I think we need to vote yes for this station. We've lived here as long as we've been voting on this and every year there's a huge effort to make it more, the design more responsive to what people say we need. How many of you went to the open house for the fire stations? Did you feel that they were going to be able to protect your house if it got on fire? It is so lacking in everything that is needed: space, room for engines, room for safety and a way to prevent people from being exposed to chemicals, both upstairs and down. So I'm going to vote, I support this, I ask you to support it. I want my fire department to be responsive if I have a fire and they need our help to get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jimmy Tempesta. I've been a selectman for a short period of time, but I feel 100% you have to move this. And the reason I say that is because all it's going to do is keep holding us back on other things. We've kicked this can around for enough of years. You all have to understand, we are saving the money. This is going to be on no impact to the taxpayers. We're already saving this money. So whether we save the money for 10 years, get the fire station in 10 years, where it's going to cost us a lot more money, or we get it now. Now, we can argue about the location, the size of the building, we're never going to satisfy everybody, but there's a majority of people here that know we need a fire station, we know we need to get it out of there. Let's get it done, move on to the next issue of this town. The problem we're having, if this keeps coming up like this, we're not going to get anything else done because this is language. Let's move ahead. That's how I feel about it. And I think we've got to stop taking this can around and it's going to be no impact on the taxpayers and we're going to be putting this money away every year. So it's either now or 10 years and we pay $10 million for it. That's how I feel about it.
Bob DeRosa from East Swansea and I'm a current candidate for a selectman. I feel that the, I don't agree with the location up there and, but there's more, there's more of a problem to the fire department than just the building. You have a problem with the management of the fire department. It starts right at the top. And I will give you an example and then you can fill in the blanks. We had a fire chief here, it was Henry, he served for about 30 years. I'm not exact when he started, when he started, but I think it was somewhere in the mid, mid 90s. So he was here for about 30 years. So for the next 30 years, we've had six chiefs. So what does that tell you? One chief for 30 years and then we're in our sixth chief for 30 years. We'll leave you with that to wonder about because that's the other problem.
I'm just going to interject on that. First of all, that should have been ruled out of order. We're discussing a fire station. This board is firmly committed to the leadership that we have. Eric and his team with Mick and Mike and Norm have done a fabulous job. They pulled us out of a situation that was very contentious. They've been successful in bringing firefighters back who had left based on previous management. We're fully supportive of that and any criticism of them in a meeting like this is grossly unfounded. They're doing a hell of a job and they deserve our appreciation.
Sir.
Hi, Jay Ward, Swansea resident and the Chair of the Fire Station Committee. I'd like all the members of the committee to please stand while those who are here. We met since July, we've met quite frequently and we looked at how best to solve the fire station problem in Swansea. As Sly said, we're close the last six years, we're close to getting this fire station approved, but we couldn't satisfy enough people to do that. So we came up with a design which was better. We chose a location which was the least expensive location and we worked with the architects and others to come up with a station which solved the problem. The problem was, we cannot keep the engines in the building. It has nothing to do with the numbers of people in the fire department or past history of things that happened in the past. We have a present problem and we have to solve the problem we have at present. And that problem is the fire station has to be replaced. Fire Station Number Two has to be, have an alternate location. Any other place but the place we chose is going to cost more. How much more? I don't know. How much does land cost these days? But more than that, the lands would have to be, the purchase of the land would have to be approved by the town and it would just mean it would go on for another year or two or whatever. So in terms of getting this thing solved quickly, efficiently, with the best design possible, we came up with what the proposal is here. And as was pointed out by Sly, we've been putting the last three years or so, the town has been putting aside money toward the Capital Reserve Fund for the fire station and if we continue to do that, it's the same amount of money that would be paid to service the bond in this case. It's no tax impact, your taxes will not go up next year because of the fire station. So please, support the fire department. The contributions from the members of the fire department who are in this committee were amazing and these are amazing people who do the best they can for the town and we really need to support them and the future of the town by voting this fire station in.
I agree with the need for a new fire station. My question is, Jim has said that it won't impact the tax bills for next year. Oh, okay, because your handout says it's 15 cents on a thousand.
I can do it, Jim, if you want.
So will it affect our taxes?
Well, the increase is $150,000 a year, but right now, in the last three years, I think, Michael came up with this idea of putting $150,000 from the fund balance, which is the money that we were approved to spend, but we haven't spent year over year, and another $150,000 a year. So we've been putting away $300,000 a year. So that helped lower the cost for the fire station this time. And like I had read in the beginning, if we don't approve it and we just want to wait 10 years, we could keep putting away $300,000 a year with no increase in taxes next year or the year after because we're doing it now. It's the same as this year. And, you know, over 10 years, we would have the $3 million, but it's going to cost more.
Right.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Mike York. I want to do a personal thing about the chief, the fire chief. I had two medical episodes at my house this last summer. One of them put me in the hospital, four days in the intensive care and then another 10 days in the hospital. The chief was there, he was right there to help me to make sure that I got the care that I needed until the ambulance came. So I thank him very much from the bottom of my heart. The other thing is the cost of land today. Any realtor, and I was one in the past, will tell you that land in Swansea is going anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 per acre. If you take you on a four or five acre property for a fire station, you're talking about a huge, huge amount of money that we'd have to come up with. This option, we already own the property.
Is anyone else curious to speak?
Dan Kaufman, Swansea, good evening. I came here with the intention tonight of making a motion to reduce the overall cost of this fire station proposal by $500,000. And the reason why I think that is because I think there's a mind block on this $3 million number. I've felt like that for years. Note that I voted for, for every one of these proposals every time we voted. And whether it's six or seven or it ends up being eight or nine, I don't know where we're going to be. I hope we pass it anytime soon would be great for me. But I think just for consideration of the body and of the board, I feel like there's something in our town that has just got a mental block on $3 million or above that. And it's people, whether it's opinions on how we're running the place or not, I happen to enjoy these guys, you know, many of them I've met, many of them have helped me doing things in my time of need, so I'm down with all of that. That's why I voted up each time. However, I feel like our townspeople have a problem with either it's fear of shiny metal object syndrome, meaning we got too much of that, we don't need any shiny buildings to go with it. I don't know what it is, but I think we got a fear of something north of $3 million. If we have to do this again, I would urge the body to get closer to that number. Whether that's possible or not, I have no idea, but I have some experience with it. I think, my personal opinion is, I think it would pass if it was $3 million and I don't think we'd have to worry about it. I think it'd be 65%. I don't think it'd be 60, I think it'd be 65, it'd be almost 70. That's my personal opinion. So I don't like 3.5, but I am going to vote for it. What I do like is the fact that we already own a piece of land and I think whatever we put up should be on the piece of land we own. That is further from my home, I would say, as well. So is it a service to me to be further from my home? No, but I think it makes the most sense from our, from our town business point of view. Back to what maybe I don't like, is I don't like being taxed on something, meaning we're using money. I think Mike had a great idea, however, I don't like the idea of being taxed for something that was voted down, meaning we taxed our folks in the town and put the money over here where they said, don't put the money. But they voted for you to have the ability to do that. It's the funniest thing, I just think people don't know what the heck they were doing. So I don't know if that is a mindset of some folks as well, but I don't like having to pay that whether it's $300,000 a year, $150,000 a year, whatever it is, and the rest of our townspeople said, please don't do that. That's it.
Two points.
Yes, sir.
Great minds think alike. I think it was 3.9 million and this guy said 3.5. So we've already cut down a lot of stuff, Jake can tell you. The second thing is putting money in the Capital Reserve Account for future fire stations. 1970, when they put the fire station underneath the Town Hall, in their infinite wisdom, this body created Capital Reserve Fund to build a fire station. They never put any money in it. So, yeah, we're putting money in it, we put money in other Capital Reserve Funds because it's part of the overall plan that we need some money to get things started and then we need the bond on these big projects, so.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly appreciate that, understand the rationale, but I think that's what keeps us from being able to move forward, of the things that are keeping us from moving forward.
But it's not just us. You know, this is all transparent, it's in the warrant articles.
Every year.
Every year. The same with our road plan, we put money away to do roads, we also bond some roads, so, and then the operating budget does more roads, so, you know, there's a lot of roads.
So that's my thoughts on where we're going with this. I hope we pass it, you guys. I hope we get something. I wish it was a different design, that's not up for debate at the moment, but I hope we get it and if we don't and we have to go through this again, please somebody call me, I'd like to participate. I was sleeping and didn't participate this time around, I wish I would have, I regret that I didn't, but certainly would welcome phone call.
Anyone else want to speak for the first time? Bob, you want to speak again pertaining, pertaining to this article, please?
First of all, I would like to say to Mr. Hutwilk, I take your comments very negatively. We've been on several things surrounding the department. My references to the chiefs, it has nothing to do with the present one. My reference to was showing that one was here for 30 years and we've had five going on the six within 30 years. And it basically shows how long they've been here, which is not very long. We've had three, we've had three locals, we've had two from the outside and now we have our current one. So I was basically just, just trying to show there hasn't been any long-term chiefs like before. Getting, getting back.
Yeah, I got it, Paul. This has nothing to do with the building and bonding of the fire station, this sounds like operations differences, so I would have to rule this out.
I was going, I was going there next.
Move the question.
No one else chooses to speak? Thank you. We have a motion to.
I'll second it. I already did.
You already did. All right, we have a motion to approve this warrant article. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Article five.
Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article five to the floor for debate.
Motion was made and seconded to bring Article five forward. Do we have discussion?
Mr. Moderator, this article is a $6.4 million low interest loan through the state with a 40% forgivable to purchase, or forgivable principle, to purchase and improve the West Swansea Water Company. A grant-funded study identified the system's needs, which are a pump house and storage tank. The current owners want to sell the system to the town. Town ownership will provide stable management for the users and will lead to improvements that will help maintain the current operation and will allow for future potential, future potential for commercial expansion in the area due to increased capacity for fire flows. The cost of this article is expected to be paid for by the users of the system through user fees. 40% forgivable funding is not expected to be available in the future and if Article 12 is not approved by the voters, this item cannot be reconsidered for two years. This is an opportunity for Swansea, which is unlikely, we're unlikely to get this again and will likely come back in the future with a higher cost.
Did you want some? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing about this. I think this is the most important article that we have on the floor. And I'm gonna tell you why. This is done in our lap. We're gonna get 40% forgiveness. It sounds like a lot of money. Again, we're gonna do this without any impact on taxpayers. This is for the future, that you've gotta think that we're gonna bring businesses to this town, which that's what we want. Route 10, that's where it's gonna grow. Do we want tattoo parlors and little sewers, or do we want a nice big company to come in and bring 150 people and they go to work here? We can't do that unless we have water. So that's the step that we're gonna take to make our budget even stronger because we're gonna get more tax money. So this is the most important thing we can vote on, and I think the town's gonna realize this, that it's gonna help us out greatly to encourage businesses to come to our town, which businesses like Webb, that was great for our town. It's gonna give us a lot of tax money. If we put an apartment complex in there, we have, we have all those peoples we have to take care of. Our business is low impact on this town for service and everything like that. But we have nothing to offer businesses to come here. If we're gonna go fishing for businesses, we need to bait. The bait is having water and sewer on Route 10 especially. And this is gonna make everything better in years to come. So I urge you all to vote to this because it's gonna be very important. This is handed to its mouth. And I know there's people out there that are saying, "Oh, we've got water, we've got water, but we've got nowhere to put it." I get that, but we're gonna have to get to that pot. This is two pots, water and sewer. But this is the pot we need to take care of now. It's here now. This opportunity might not ever come across us again. And this is gonna be something, in a few years, it's gonna come back to us, and it's gonna be kicking the can again. We're gonna be sitting here saying, "Wish we did it." And it's gonna keep coming back upon us if we don't have the right water enough, and the pressure, and all this in this time. So I urge everybody to tell everybody and explain to everybody how important this is and we vote yes on this. Thank you.
Any further?
My name is Dave Jones, Cosway Road. My question has to do with the purchase price, 600,000. Where'd that number come from?
That, that number is a placeholder. It's a number that was presented to us. It has not been negotiated.
I see, okay. Because when I look at the assets and the income, it's nowhere close to that number. It sounds like a big.
Sly can speak to the cost of drilling well and providing municipal service.
DES, before inflation, DES always kind of quoted, if you were gonna site a well and drill it and make it produce, producing potable water, it was a million dollars. So they have two wells there. And granted, the pipes are old, the pressure tank isn't, you know, what we want. We want to put a storage tank up a hill so that gravity can provide water to the fire hydrants in case the power goes out. And you're, you're buying the land, the franchise, basically, to provide water to the 90 connections or whatever's there. Some of them are big apartment buildings. So $600,000 in that area is not out of line. That's actually probably a pretty good deal.
Their assets are listed at 255,828. It does not include the wells and the pumps and all that stuff?
I mean, if we, if we didn't do that, if, if it wasn't there, okay, because of the franchise issue, we can't put in a water system in their franchise area. But suppose it wasn't there. If we just wanted to go out and put in a well and start running some pipe to people, $600,000 wouldn't even get us the well. And, you know, and buying the land to have the well, because you have to have 600 feet around it.
But that's not the case here.
What's that?
That's not the case here. It exists now.
Right.
And you're gonna buy it from someone.
And I, I think it's half the cost of what it's probably valued at.
I don't understand.
I'm just saying that if, if they were selling a well that produced drinkable water, it would be a million dollars, because that's what it would cost to, for the town to put one in, to drill a well and develop it.
But that's why you buy it from someone else.
Okay.
And not put it even yourself.
We're having running debate.
Yeah, sorry.
And it's gonna take care of, thank, I think your question was answered.
Barbara Scully, West Swansea. So, once this water company is purchased and all the upgrades are made, there's going to be annual costs involved with running, the, and operating. There's testing. I'm sure you're gonna have to hire a licensed operator. So what are the anticipated costs annually for this, and who's going to be paying for those? Just the water users?
Just like the North Swansea Water and Fire Precinct, the people that live in the precinct pay for the, the water use and the operator, the testing, the repairs, everything. So if you live in the water precinct in North Swansea, you pay for that. If you live over here in West Swansea and you're connected to the system, you're gonna pay this bill.
So what's the anticipated cost to the user, then? Do we have any idea what that will be?
Right. So the current operations, I don't know exactly what that number is, but North Swansea has an annual budget of about $500,000 a year. So, and it's a much larger system.
Thank you, Sly.
Stephen Biddle. Just to clarify, purchase price of the water company, it's a subject I looked into in some detail, as I was originally a little nonplussed by the 600,000. You have to understand there's an accounting basis, something I've done a little bit of in my life, and a valuation basis. The accounting basis and the whole thrust of their statements show really a distressed company. And they're that way because the PUC, quite frankly, makes them that way. To look at the accounting numbers for a valuation is literally meaningless. The value is in the water rights and the permitted wells. And I think frankly, after looking at it a lot, it's probably worth perhaps more, and could be worth more to an outside purchaser who would come in and start bottling water. Something that could happen. So I understand the problem that someone could have looking at their statements. And when you look at the statements, frankly, they're pretty grim. But they have literally little to nothing to do with the value. I would also add that the assessed value that the town has, I believe, is around half a million. Michael, is that, yeah. So we're valuing it at virtually the same price. That's just to clarify matters.
Thank you. Anything further? Hi. Uh-oh.
I, I support this, this endeavor 100%. I think at the, as a, as a reason, looking at the 600,000, I think we have to look at what the Browns have done for West Swansea. Not only the, you know, their involvement with Cutler School and bringing the water over to the mill, and also any of the, well, the Ball Field over there, Brown Field. So the Browns have done a lot for the town. So I feel 600,000 is, is not a big price to repay them. And also on capital improvements for the town in this sort, I, I have a, I'd like to see all, all capital improvements that are in the seven figures borne by the whole town. You know, even if it's over here, I don't have a problem myself paying part of that 4 million over the 30 years. But I, I think that, that might make it more palatable for all of us, you know, to help pay for that, that way. Spread that whole cost over the whole town. Because we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna end up doing the sewer plant too, and that's gonna be a seven-figure deal. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Bob. Uh-oh. Go ahead.
Scottsdale, living Swansea, West Swansea here. And I've been associated with the, the mill and the water company for quite a while, for quite a while. I know that system pretty well. There are two wells there. There's a, a third well that they haven't used, which is more capacity than the other two wells. Those two wells there are 350 gallon a minute wells. They've been in there since the 60s, and proven wells. They deliver a lot of water and sewer. They deliver a lot of water. When they ran the mills down there, they used it for all their dyeing processes down there. And they would fill those kettles, 1,000 gallon kettles with a four-inch pipe, all of them running at the same time. And those wells never faltered at all. And the infrastructure that's in there, there are pipes in there, there are cement asbestos pipes, which sounds bad, but it isn't, unless you get the dust in your face, but you don't because the pipes are buried in the ground. And those have been proven as well. They've been in the ground since the 60s. They're all in sand. To my recollection, they've never broken at all. They don't rust out. And anytime we've bored into them to make a connection, they've been perfect on the inside, no closure at all. So that part of the system is good. And you've got those two wells, gravel pack wells, and that and the infrastructure in the ground is well worth it. The other thing is, I'm on the planning board, and we need infrastructure. We need water on that Route 10 there. And we're never gonna get it with a private water company because, as was stated before, the PUC won't allow them the same advantages that the town has. PUC makes them go out and get a loan, market rate values, to do their infrastructure and expansion, and then they can raise rates if they let them to cover that cost. The town is veteran with that. The town can get grants. The town can do a lot more. Is that even working, is it? Okay. Sorry about that. The, the town can do, do a lot more with that. System a lot easier. They can get grants, as I said. And again, with the private water company, they aren't gonna have the money, and they aren't gonna be able to expand that water down to Route 10. And that's gonna just stay as it is. And we need that infrastructure. So I'm in favor, as you can tell.
I don't know if all of us could hear that, but I'm not gonna ask for it to be repeated. Anybody else wish to chime in on it? Move, move the question? Who moved the question? Paul? Okay. Then moved, seconded to call the question. I guess all those in favor of the article for the water treatment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're on what?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article six to the floor for debate.
Article six has been moved to the floor for debate and seconded. Anyone wishing to speak to it?
I will, Mr. Moderator. Article six is a $100,000 forgivable loan through the state to fund a stormwater capital improvement plan. This plan will identify priority stormwater projects and will help put the town in a position for grants to help fund them. Thanks to 100% principal forgiveness, this article is expected to have minimal cost to the town. Basically, just a little bit of interest until the principal gets forgiven.
Further discussion? Question's been moved and seconded. Without objection, we'll go to the vote. All over in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article seven to the floor for debate.
The move and seconded Article seven to the floor for debate. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Article seven, this article is the town's operating budget of $8,370,000, which is an increase from 2024 of 5.1%. After the budget hearing, the selectmen reviewed the budget and identified decreases based on the accounting, on accounting for vacant positions to lower this article over $300,000. The major increases in the recommended budget are employee-related costs, additional payroll in the Department of Public Works, increased need for general assistance, and higher welfare costs. An additional payroll in the recreation department. The major decrease is in the insurance budget based on the change in budgeting for vacant positions. Reducing the budget further or voting for the default budget will negatively impact the town's ability to provide core services.
Anything further on the budget? Say none, entertain a motion? Motion's been made and seconded to approve Article seven, as we, as presented to us, with no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article eight to the floor for debate.
The move and seconded. To move Article eight to the floor for debate. This is for, for capital reserve?
Yep. Mr. Moderator, Article eight is the first article appropriating funds to the town's capital reserve and expendable trust that help finance a six-year capital improvement plan as recommended by the Capital Improvement Committee. This article saves[1680.03][1680.08]$477,500 in various accounts not associated with Department of Public Works. Not associated with Department of, okay. These include capital expenses for the police, fire, recycling departments, town facilities, and other purposes.
I'd like to offer an amendment to this article. I've got it in writing here.
You have an amendment?
Yes.
I have it, please.
I want the overall amendment reduced by $75,402,500. And I'd like to remove the money that's going to earmark to the Golden Rod Grange Hall.
Did you have, did you have the emotion, yeah, motion written out?
It's ten to ten.
Oh, okay. I see it. So the motion is to
Reduce.
Reduce Article eight's funding. Oh, okay. The major effect is zeroing out the Golden Rod Grange Hall amount. Further discussion?
Seconded?
Seconded.
Yep. Go ahead.
With the expense and the money we're looking to spend in the town, and the amount of money it's gonna take to rehab that building, I don't feel it's, it's money we should be spending right now. Seventy-five thousand dollars is minimal to what that structure needs. If you've ever been in it, it's in terrible shape, and its life has really gone by. I know we've spent a lot of money out in the past year, but at some point, we've gotta stop, and we've got other priorities. Fire stations, the water situation, all these other things that we really should be focusing on.
I did have a question earlier. Do you have an accounting of what, I think it was, what we do last year, a hundred and fifty thousand or so?
One fifteen.
One fifteen.
Fix the roof.
Of what? Of what that money was used for?
Yeah, fix the roof and the roofing process.
And that's been accomplished?
I understand you're a law technician.
Okay, answered that question. Anything further? Go ahead, Jane.
Most of you know I'm Jane Johnson, and every year, I stand to support working to preserve the Grange Hall. And we have inched away at it for the last fifteen years, probably, giving it very little. And it is a historical building. Something that impresses me about our town is that we have a wonderful history in this town dating back to the days of the Indians. The Grange Hall stands right in the middle of the early settlement of Swansea Center. This doesn't mean as much, I grant you, as an operating fire department and the operating water department, but I think it's something that we need to consider. We need the water, we need the fire department, I would do nothing to, to take away from that. But at the same time, we need to appreciate the place where we live, where our forefathers lived and settled, and tearing down the Grange Hall, for what? The land isn't really big enough for anything wonderful that we need, and we have invested money in it. And I notice that on the proposed town operating budget, in a line item for culture and recreation, we're adding to that every year. And what better place to employ things related to culture and recreation than the Grange Hall? And I would beg to differ with the previous speaker that it is not a wreck inside. It is not Whitcomb Hall. We don't expect it to be Whitcomb Hall. It doesn't need shiny floors, and it doesn't have tin walls and ceilings. It's very common, because Grangers were common working people, and they, with their own labor of their backs, built that building. And I guess you can see, I think it should continue. Thank you.
Sir?
Bruce Bergstrom, Swansea, of course. Yeah, I certainly appreciate historical properties, I love historical properties. But, I mean, life is full of choices, and these are tax dollars, and it's a lot of tax dollars, and it sounds to me like this is a money pit. And, you know, where, where do you draw the line? I mean, it's, you know, it's a, you know, probably was a nice building at one point in time, but now, you know, we've got a lot of things to spend money on, and that seems like not the right spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Self again. And, yeah, we just put a new roof on that building, and I'm not in favor of tearing that building down and just put a new roof on it. The roof will hold the building for a long time, you know, you got a good roof on the building, the building will, will maintain. So, I don't have a, really a problem with taking the seventy-five thousand away from it for this year, let them fundraise for a while like we did on Whitcomb Hall here. But to forget the building, I'm not in favor of that. It's a historical building for the town.
Bob?
Yeah. Let's see.
Jim McConnell. I think the real question is, is it economically repairable? And I haven't heard an estimate of what it's gonna cost to repair this, to put it in the condition that we would need to have it in to make it something that would be serviceable and useful. So, I don't know if anybody has one, but I'd like to know what it is.
I would think it'd be like a bottom project, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, closing in on a million.
Closing in on a million? Thank you.
I'd like to speak in, in favor of it. We've, we've put a new roof on it, it looks good. I guess at this point, I'd like to ask Norm if he, yeah, come on up. I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you to come up and, as the chairman, and explain where you are, whether, and, at this point, if you, if we had the foundation and where you can, I, I know you're Everett Launer.
Are you through, Bob?
You're either gonna sit down, or I do. My name's Norm Scanty, and I served as the selectman's, as the chairman of the Selectmen's Advisory Committee for the Grange. And there's four of us that were appointed to this committee, Linda Minichello, Eileen Lounge, and Lillian Chichilla. And the four of us have been meeting as a committee for the past two years, twice a month. And basically, the way this started is we had, the town hired Petrovic Architectural Firm to come in and do an assessment of the building. I don't remember what that plan cost, but he came through, and he used structural engineers, and he used other experts to look at the building. And they basically came up with a plan that said it would cost like one point three million to do a historic renovation of the building. Faced with that, the committee met with the selectmen, and the selectmen said, there's no way we're doing a one point two million dollar restoration of the building that will never pass the town meeting. And we said, it's been in continuous use since nineteen sixteen. And the Swansea Preservation Society, the Garden Club, various other organizations, and now Coffee Connections, which is a service that's put on weekly for senior citizens, we've had the Bluegrass Festival there. And the building does get used. It's not as terrible as it sounds, and I would invite you, we need to, we've made a mistake, and I apologize, that we haven't been able to get people into the building. It's not a conditioned building, there's no heat, and there's no restrooms. But during the summertime, we use the building quite a bit. And we had a problem with water coming through the roof. And I know that some people in the community felt, oh, we gotta do, you do the foundation first. But the problem was, we literally had water pouring through the roof, so a decision had to be made. And we stood up last year and asked for the money to fix the roof. And it was not my intention to come to this meeting tonight and ask for any money, because we just finished that project, and we had some money in capital reserve. However, the next step on our master plan, approved by the selectmen, was to get the building watertight, okay? So, we need, we had a little problem with water running into the basement, which was a drainage problem. We had windows that we wanted to restore, historically restore correctly, and we wanted to do the roof, which we accomplished. We have applied for a lot of grants, and we've been denied because we don't have programs. We can't have programs because it's not a conditioned building. So, what we've been doing, coordinating with the selectmen, is do a little bit as we can. So, if you wanna reduce this article, nobody on the advisory committee or the selectmen probably will be upset, but I know they wanna paint it. And I know people in town have told me many, many times, they want that building painted, and I know that there's a lot of people in the town that love that building. So, I think, I understand what is, is being said, maybe we could raise less money, we weren't asking for that, but I think the selectmen, in their position, felt that was an appropriate amount of money. So, you know, whatever you do will be fine, but we're gonna keep working on it, and keep chipping away, keep trying to raise money, and keep trying to get grants. We actively pursuing grants with the town. They're the ones that are applying for it. That town building, you own it. There's no club, this isn't a 501(c)(3), it's a town building.
Steve Biddle again. I need to clarify what Bob was talking about here. You get up, and you said that you were in, in favor of this. Are you in favor of the reduction? Or are you in favor of...
Seventy-five.
What's that?
I'm in favor of the seventy-five towards it.
Well, we're on the, we're on the amendment.
He's opposed to the amendment, is what he should've said.
What's that?
He is opposed to the amendment.
Right, right, got it. Are you opposed?
No, I'm here to clarify a few things. I was chairman of CIPC this past year. The Grange was a hotly discussed item on CIPC. Eventually, a compromise was reached. Pivotal to what's going on with the Grange is the determination that the town property manager reached, that nothing should be done in that building until the foundation is fixed. Anything that is done, like new windows, would probably be cracked while the work is going on in the basement. The cost estimated, which I personally believe is low, was a hundred and fifty thousand for, to fix it. We said, as a compromise, okay, the town will put up seventy-five thousand if, and only if, the Grange committees can come up with a grant of seventy-five thousand or greater. And that's how it came out of CIPC. So, you first have to understand that nothing really, I gather, by, um, the Board of Selectmen feel, that the foundation has to be fixed first. So, there's no increment other than that. Secondly, it came out of CIPC saying that it was...
We've got a motion on the floor to amend this article.
I'm explaining it, Bruce. The seventy-five thousand is a match, and that's the relevance of it.
Don't they have the other seventy-five thousand?
No.
Okay, so what we have on the floor is to reduce the capital reserve funds for the Goldenrod Grange to zero, and change the, which changes the total of four hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars for, to go into these other, as they're presented. Any other first timers?
Just very briefly, I don't wanna belabor this. There is no Grange organization in the town of Swansea, the Grangers haven't been here for years. There is a state Grange and a national Grange, which is kinda what we're trying to preserve. We are a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen. We were appointed by the selectmen, we report to them, they give us direction, we have a charge with them. We have engineering reports, and the Petrovic report that we got back, that actually say the foundation will, is, although it needs some repair work, it's ultimately in good shape. That's the words that are used, and that's online on the town website, if you wanna look at it. I don't wanna get into a running debate about it. I know people are emotional, you know, about this, but we wanna make that a senior center and a meeting place for nonprofits. That's what we told the selectmen that we thought the purpose should be, and they agreed with us. That we need a place where nonprofits can meet, where they don't have to pay to go, and we need to do more for seniors. That Coffee Connections is just once a week, and it's been very successful, and I think there could be other activities there in time, working for the recreation department. So, I would encourage you to, you know, just to not defeat this. Thanks.
What was the amendment? Next.
We have a motion, move the amendment and second it. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Do you understand the amendment?
State it again.
It's been moved.
Right. What it would do is change, where is the total? You would take seventy-five thousand dollars and zero it out opposite the Goldenrod Grange Hall, which would bring it to four hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars to go into the capital referred, reserved funds, if that was taken out. That's what we're voting on. Any further? Saying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The chairs in doubt, which isn't a big deal. But I, do we do... Okay, in, to get away with the, out of the doubt place, can all those who are in favor of this amendment, please stand up. Sixteen. I've got sixteen on this one.
Ma'am, do you want it down?
I'm up. I sat down before.
Nine over here.
Nine? I've got eighteen on this side.
I don't think nine, bro.
More than nine here.
A lot higher, twenty now.
We asking for a recount? Uh, stand up anywhere.
Twelve over here.
Twelve? I just wanna be sure. Yeah, I totally get it before. You had how many, Paul?
Twelve.
Twelve? Take my shoes off. I'll have a meeting work for. Let's see. I just want to be sure. Yeah, I probably did before. You had how many, Paul?
Twelve.
Twelve? Take my shoes off. I'll have a meeting work for. Let's see. But twenty-six. Did you go bring it on? I get seventeen on this side. No. This will be no's. I'd say it's thirty-one to. Unless someone objects and wants to go to a ballot vote, I say that the amendment passes.
It's about thirty-one to twenty-nine if it pass.
Yeah. Yeah. Thirty-one, so that means the amendment passes.
Does that number become zero?
Yes.
Right, right.
Any further comment on the vote? Seeing none, that's.
Move restrict reconsideration.
Seconded.
Motion is paid to re-constrict. Yeah, yeah. Restrict reconsideration, somewhere in there, on Article eight as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. So we have that recorded. Hi. Okay. Want to make that motion to put the as amended on the line?
Now we're going on the amended art, right?
No. Yes. We have to do it. Have done it yet. Geez. Must be on the clock. So move to move Article eight as amended on super bowl. Then seconded.
Move the article.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article nine to the floor for debate.
Seconded. Motion, Article nine, move to the floor.
Mr. Moderator, Article nine is the second article appropriating funds to the town's capital reserve and expendable trust that help finance the six-year capital improvement plan as recommended by the Capital Improvement Committee. This article saves six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in various accounts associated with Department of Public Works. These purposes include road construction, road reconstruction, sidewalks, trucks and equipment, bridges, and rail trails.
Discussion?
Move the, second.
I don't see any discussion, so motion is to move the article and has been seconded. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You know it.
Can you stand up when you say that?
No, I can't, but. I'm not used to not use it, guys, sorry.
It's okay.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article ten to the floor for debate.
Okay. Moved and seconded to move Article ten to debate.
Mr. Moderator, this article saves three hundred thousand dollars in the fire station's capital reserve fund if the fire station bond fails. The tax impact it saved towards a fire station is the same as approving the bond, thanks to half funding from taxes and half from the fund balance. Five hundred thousand dollars has been saved in this article so far.
Further discussion? Move it.
Second.
Article ten has been moved and seconded. I don't see any discussion. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Has it mattered?
What it does. Everybody get the vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article eleven to the floor for debate.
Article eleven. Seconded.
Mr. Moderator.
The tax increment finance.
Article eleven would create the West Swansea Tax Increment Finance District, which would use future tax payments on assessed value increases in the district to fund infrastructure improvements. This district was recommended by an advisory committee and would currently fund water and sewer systems improvements or line extensions in West Swansea without raising taxes or user fees. There is no additional cost to the properties within the district. This is just like the TIF district that we had over in Safford Drive that's basically coming to an end, so.
Further discussion?
Move the question.
Second.
Article eleven has been moved and seconded. No, no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article twelve to the floor for debate.
Article twelve's been moved to the floor for debate.
Mr. Moderator, this article allows the Selectmen to begin the process to purchase the West Swansea Water Company through the process outlined in RSA thirty-eight colon four. If this article is approved, the purchase agreement will need to be finalized and approved at a future town meeting, likely later in 2025. If this article is rejected, it cannot be reconsidered for two years.
Further. Article moved.
Aye.
Seconded. Remain as it is. All those in favor of Article twelve?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, Article thirteen.
Article thirteen to the floor for debate.
Mr. Moderator, Article thirteen would save one hundred thousand dollars in the ambulance expendable trust fund created in 2024. The town's current contract for ambulance services with Cheshire County EMS runs until June thirtieth, 2026. After the current contract, the town expects significantly higher costs, and this article saves to help soften that cost increase, because it is funded by the undesignated fund balance, has no direct tax impact.
Further discussion? So we move.
No questions?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article fourteen to the floor for debate.
Seconded. Okay. Speak to it.
Mr. Moderator, this article would readopt the new commercial and industrial tax exemption adopted in 2020. This exemption allows the Selectmen to grant temporary exemptions on commercial and industrial improvements when there is a public benefit, such as increasing the tax base, creating jobs, or redeveloping bladed areas. To date, the town has approved two such exemptions.
Further discussion?
Move the question.
Second.
Don't see any discussion. Articles been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to restrict reconsideration of Articles four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Second.
Can you do that?
Move to restrict.
Seconded.
Does it read those again, please?
I thought I heard that Article fourteen was moved to the ballot. Is that not correct?
It is.
Yes.
So I'm making a motion to restrict reconsideration of Articles four, five, six, seven. Eight has already been restricted, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Okay, been seconded. All those in favor, restricting?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
What do you want to do with this?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion, we move Article fifteen to the floor for debate. Petition articles can be debated.
Can't be changed.
This particular article, as Town Council can attest, the language in the article cannot be amended, but the article itself can be debated.
Mr. Moderator, this article was submitted by petition and would increase the Board of Selectmen from three to five members. If approved, this would go into effect in 2026.
Move the article.
Second, before the article is seconded, this is a very substantial proposed change in the governance of the town, and I think it's unfair to all of you who are here to move this without having a fruitful discussion.
Are there any of the petitioners that are here that would like to speak to it?
Steve Betel. I find, I agree with Bill. This is a change out of the blue that has not properly been thought through by the body and would urge voting it down. To that, I will add three thoughts. One, if it ain't fit, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Two, since when has more government solved any problem? And three, if the people who put this forth can't enter into a debate and state their case, what does that tell you? Thank you.
Paul Shering, North Swansea, four words, more is not better.
Oh, Bob.
Yes. I just did. I'd like to speak against this. I firmly believe that three has served us well over the years, and I can't see any reason to increase that number. Actually, we have four, because Michael is, he's just like another Selectman, but he's very knowledgeable. Yeah, he serves us well, so we actually have four. Thank you.
Moving further.
So the article will go as, as it de- is on the warrant. Uh, next one.
Before I move the next article, I just want to make it clear, I am so disappointed that some of you here signed that petition. In particular, the individual who initiated this petition didn't have the ability to stand up and talk to it. This is a substantial change in the way the town has been governed, and I'm really disappointed that that didn't happen.
I'm going to be called out personally, I'll stand up. My name is Brian Rogers. I started that petition after talking with our town administrator on more than three occasions and talking with our Selectmen. It was put to the voters to say, do we want it? That's all it was, and there's been great offense taken by the town hall that we asked the question. I asked the question because one of our three Selectmen had been ill for an extended period of time, thus our town is run by two people. I never voted for our town to be run by two people, and I'm not going to tolerate it, not one more time. So we put it to the voters, do you want five or not? It's simple, it's either a yes or a no. The foundation of it was that we're having all these new apartment buildings brought into town that's more resources, more infrastructure, more use against our town, our school, our roads. If you don't see it, you will, when they start moving in and filling the apartments, at which point I had done a study for every single town in the entire state of New Hampshire, every one of them, what type of government they had, how many Selectmen, mayor, manager, administrator, we have an administrator type of government at this point, and we have three Selectmen, and we're adding north of nine hundred bedrooms to our town. It's probably going to be more than one or two people move into Swansea. I felt we needed to potentially have a little bit more representation. That was purely the motive behind it. There was no ire against the town hall, even though it was taken that way. Again, it's up to the voters. At least you came out from the shadows. My comment was not with regard to whether town hall was supportive or not. My comment was that what would have been preferable would have been to have the opportunity to work collectively, as we do with CIP, as we did with the Water Committee, as we did with the TIP Committee, and as in particular, what we did with the Fire Station Committee, to bring people together to discuss whether there was a benefit to change the form of government that we have. With regard to the next steps, there's been discussion at the Board of perhaps considering town management. The argument with regards to the fact that we went out to two Selectmen last year, we were in a tough spot. We didn't have a vacant position. We can't bring someone in to replace someone who hasn't resigned. That was a circumstance. In terms of the timing, we'd already gone to our budget, we'd already done, prepared for our reviews, so all the work essentially was done, except preparing for these meetings, budget hearing, deliberative session, and obviously the warrant in March. So for us, we just would have preferred that there had been an honest discussion and an opportunity to bring it forward. And for the people that I've spoken to and the courage to vote against it, one aspect that I think would be great is if we could collectively come together with a group and recommend going back to town meeting. This particular warrant is so ideal for town meeting, because there's so many aspects, as Jim said in the very beginning, there's so many articles that pertain to how this town is going to function in the next fifty to twenty-five years, and that's all we would appreciate, was the opportunity to have debate. A couple of people that I spoke to who signed the petition, that was their intent. They understood that it would provide the opportunity to have a debate. This doesn't do that, and that's the objection. It's not the objection to go into five members. If one member went down, then you'd have four, so what's the argument? The argument is we should have had five. Well, if that person doesn't resign, we can't replace him. We did look into the possibility of appointing an alternate. We've been advised by Town Council, it's not permitted by understate law. So we were stuck in a rock between a quarter, a cob rock, and a hard place, and we did, Sly and I, the best that we could, with the assistance of Michael and the other townsman. That was, that was the answer. So I appreciate that, and I thank you for the clarification as far as what the town's position was. You've now heard me publicly state what my position was. It's up to the voters. I'm not trying to hide in the shadows, I'm not trying to be some lurky lurky out there stirring up the dust in Swansea. I travel for work, that comes first. I put it out there, voters don't want anything, vote it down.
Thank you.
Really that simple.
Does anyone want to go forward?
It goes forward. The article, being a petition article, will move forward.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article sixteen to the floor for debate.
Seconded. Article sixteen is also a petition article.
Mr. Moderator, this article was submitted by petition and would add an additional polling place here at Whitcomb. place here at Whitcomb Hall. The selectmen do not recommend this article, because it would add cost and create confusion and logistical concerns without a clear benefit.
Any of the petitioners that are here? Have initiated this?
So my name is Heather Estrella. I would like to do an amendment to Article Sixteen to see if the town will vote to study adding a second polling location for all voting, local and federal, at Seventeen Main Street, Whitcomb Hall.
Do you have that in writing?
Can you hear that? Bruce, can you read that to us? It can be amended.
Bruce, can you read?
Okay. Amendment takes precedent. Oh, we were passing the other one. So, the amendment is to see if the town will vote to study adding a second polling location for all voting, local and federal, at Seventeen Main Street, Whitcomb Hall. So, discussion on the amendment. Did we have a second? Okay, it's been seconded.
I just...
I've been asked to clarify the question of whether it can be amended, and it can. And you may be wondering, well, if the previous article couldn't be amended, why can this be amended? There's nothing that prohibits petitioned articles from being amended. They're just like any other articles. They can be amended. The reason the prior one couldn't be is there is a provision in state law that says articles whose language is prescribed by statute cannot be amended. And the previous article, the one about increasing the size of the Board of Selectmen, that language is specifically in state statute, and therefore it cannot be amended. But, in general, petitioned articles can be amended. The other question that I anticipate someone might bring up is, well, you can amend it, but you can't change the intent. That's not correct either. The Supreme Court has specifically said you can change the intent of an article, whether it's petitioned or otherwise. You cannot change the subject matter. The subject matter here is an additional polling place at Whitcomb Hall. So this amendment is not changing the subject matter, and therefore it is permissible.
Good job.
Okay, my name is Carol DeRosa. I was the town clerk here for 21 years, and I was here when we first started, well, when my first year was here, we had four voting places. One in East Swansea, North Swansea, West Swansea, and the center. The reason we brought it all in was because it was very, very difficult to get workers, and that's what I think you'll find if you instigate a... just a research on the issue. We also, at that time, got the voting machines, which helped tremendously. Prior to that, getting the votes all tallied and calculated to send to the state was taking way too much time. So, I would recommend you can either accept this agreement or not, but the whole petition, to me, is ludicrous.
Scott Elf again. And I signed that petition to have a voting here. I live in West Swansea, probably one of the reasons I signed it. But after, you know, talking to other people about it and thinking about it, I liked the amendment better to think about it, because other things I hadn't considered was, where do you draw the line for the precinct? You know, how do you do that? And those types of logistics, so I'm in favor of the amendment.
Joe DeRusso, Public Works Director. I'm in favor of the amendment as well. A lot of people don't realize just how much goes into setting up for the voting. And prior to being over at the high school, obviously the voting was out at a church in one isolated area in town. The side of the school has been great to us with letting us use that facility. There's plenty of room, there's plenty of park, and it is somewhat centrally located. But as far as looking into doing something like that, this planning is a great idea. As it stands right now, we do not have the resources, we being Public Works, to set up a second. We barely have enough to get it done, especially if it happens to be a winter storm in March, which recently happened. So there is a lot to go into it, and if that's what the public wants, this planning study can address those issues and see what it's going to take.
One is for...
I'm not sure if this is part of the amendment or not, but being supervisor of the checklist, I'm part of a email chain of supervisors of the checklist for the whole state. Out of all the towns in the state, I had eight responses, and I asked other towns how many voting places they have. So eight places responded. They have anywhere from 4,000 voters to 18,000 voters. They all have one polling place. They just get more ballot clerks, that's all it takes.
Dan Kaufman, Swansea. I support the amendment by Ms. Estrella. Further that, I don't even know how anybody comes up with this idea. This is crazy to me. Why we're going to advocate for spending another whatever, whether it's $15,000 or add another 10 to it to try to set something up? It doesn't make any sense to me. If we're going to study it, I would also... I would love to participate, by the way. I would also like to add to the study of how silly it is to have kids have a day off and those employees have a day off of school in order for us to vote. I know logistically it's way better than being over at the church, I get that. However, having manipulated school calendars is not good. And I'll be glad to get in the ring with anyone over that, but that's what has happened since we've changed this voting. So when we get ready to consider and study whatever else we're going to do, maybe we're going to have enough room in the parking lot of new fire station to house that, right? Or create some parking outside of road, who the heck knows? But I know it's not good to have kids get a different day off of school. We got enough problems in the school district. We don't need to be taking time away from them. Thank you.
Move the amendment. Second.
You have a motion to move the amendment. Are you familiar with what the amendment says? Well, some people don't. Some of us can't see that far. So, this is to see if the town will vote to study the study, adding a second polling location for all voting, local and federal, at Seventeen Main Street, Whitcomb Hall. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the Article Sixteen is amended, and now we're back to the main article. Move the question?
Second.
So the Article Sixteen, as amended, will go on to regular ballot in its amended form. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. We have one more thing to vote. Okay. Need a motion to recess until March 11th, which will be...
All those? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much.